Good morning and welcome to the July 25 business meeting. And I'd like to announce that Commissioner Schrader is not here today. You can see that. And ask the county administrator, please take the role.
Morning Commissioners. First, our staff support today. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board. Role call, Commissioner Humberton.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up is Citizen Communication. And I have Michelle DeRosa and Lisa Bentley.
Together? Yeah.
Together. There's two seats.
Okay. All right. Then you could go ahead and start. I'm Michelle DeRosa. I live at 10244 Southeast 43rd Avenue in Milwaukee. So I am also a real estate attorney and I represent my husband's company called Rose and Magnolia Homes LLC. I'm here today both on a micro level and a personal one. The personal one has to do with a letter that we received dated the 16th of this month from the Code Enforcement Office about a project that my husband developed at 4926 Southeast Allen Road. That's the main house's address and 15700 Southeast Worthington Lane. It's a house in an ADU we permitted last year. We got COOs at the end of May. And we also recorded a condominium plat, a two-unit condominium plat for detached condominiums here at Clackamas County on May 29, I believe. So on the personal level, I'm asking your help to expedite resolution of the complaint and the file that was opened on this property. The letter alleged a land use violation for having done a, I believe they said, a land division or a lot division without approval and for having converted unen- space into habitable area without permits, neither of which has any base. Secondly, I'm here because I am a lawyer who specializes in condominiums and residential development. I'm heavily involved in legislation that has to do with that. I work on the Oregon Condominium Act, Plan Community Act in a legislative committee regularly. And finally, the Assistant Commissioner, Michael Hanifin, to the Oregon Real Estate Agency, who is the head of the land division, which oversees approval of every condominium that gets established in Oregon as well as campgrounds and time shares, which I also do some of in my practice. The issue is on the macro level is that our marketing and ability to sell this property has been killed. I heard about this alleged violation a couple of weeks ago. It became clear after a couple of conversations with Ray Griffin, County Surveyor, my surveyor, whom he called, Nate Boderman, and Cheryl Bell of the Enforcement Office, what the issues were. And then the later, the letter came after that. We had certificates of occupancy very recently. Have made no changes to the property since then. I think that the complaint about that converted space is simply baseless and not worth talking about. I'm sure that it'll be resolved quickly. On the issue of the condominium plat, however, this has gone a little viral.
Yeah, you need to finish up. You know, this is pretty complicated to tell us in three minutes.
It is.
I understand, I've had some briefing on this, so I have some idea. But we have our-
You have your procedures.
Pardon?
I understand you have a three-minute. I don't know if you'll let me wrap up, but-
Go ahead. I mean, I don't know what wrapping up. I'm so confused by what you're saying right now. I'm not really sure what you're telling us.
What I'm telling you is that under ORS 1022, which is the preemptive condominium statute over any jurisdiction that the county has, 1102 and 1102.05, I believe, is non-enforceable. You guys need to take a look at it. The Commissioner asked me to come to present that to you, to put it on your radar. And I can see some incredulity in your faces, but honestly, it does say that no zoning ordinance or regulation or any other rule can prohibit a condominium. I have a final administrative decision. My plat was approved, reviewed properly by your county surveyor, signed by your assessor. It is a final administrative decision. It's now being questioned upon the allegation that we didn't go through a design review. And 1102 is the one that says that unbeknownst to me, when we went, we got permits last year, and unbeknownst in the process as we went through, since it never came up, it says that condominiums built on residential properties have to go through design review. I have never heard of such a thing in another jurisdiction. And that is an ordinance that is fundamentally unenforceable under 100.022 of the Condominium Act. You cannot impose any additional requirements on a condominium that you would not impose on a project that was not bound to be a condominium. So you have 1102, 1103, that are unenforceable and illegal ordinances in your ZDO. Additionally, this is against public policy, in my opinion, because you're trying, you've got a housing workforce, right? You've got to deal with HB 2001. You should have already dealt with SB 1051 that has to do with ADUs. And you cannot overlay this additional requirement on a condominium. It's just not enforceable.
All right.
I'm asking your help with that.
Okay. So should I go to Counsel first or Gary first? Counsel?
Yes, hello. I have forwarded to the Board the correspondence from-
Thank you.
-the property owner's attorney, Ms. DeRosa. It is an emerging matter. It is a relatively complicated matter. Our office is involved. You've been speaking with Andrew Naylor and with Nate Boderman. I'm aware of this. Michelle Bell's aware of it. Jennifer Hughes is aware of it. We are on it. We can further brief the Board on Tuesday. Happy to do so.
And Dan Johnson's here if anyone had any questions, but it's a little complicated. Gary?
Stephen, just answer what I was going to say, so.
So basically, we'll learn more about it soon.
What I'm asking you to do is, on a personal level, I need this expedited.
So we can't, yeah, we'll do our best, but we can't just step into a code enforcement-
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that. I understand the limits of your authority. But I wanted you to know that you have, you have multiple agencies that are now trying to undo a final administrative decision based on an ordinance that is unenforceable under state law.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And Lisa.
Good morning. As you probably know, my name is Lisa Bentley, and I'm a longtime resident of Clackamas County in the Jennings Lodge area. Today, I come to you on behalf of the Clackamas County Heritage Council. It's a nonprofit association of our county's heritage organizations, and we are focused on preserving Clackamas County's history for future generations to know and love as we can today. I've also been a dedicated member of the Oak Lodge History Detectives, which has for nearly 10 years fought to protect important historic landmarks in our Oak Lodge community. We have failed dismally to save some of our most important sites or even a small portion of them. Realizing we needed help, it seemed appropriate to explore how the Clackamas County Heritage Council could assist us. It's an organization working hard on building a consensus for providing technical assistance and moral support to every history group and site in Clackamas County. Oak Lodge History Detectives, for example, would learn how we could best help ourselves by sharing in key county services, workshops, and seminars. We would collaborate and learn from one another while developing an exciting base for history tourism in the oldest county west of the Mississippi and north of San Francisco. If Clackamas County's Heritage Council's proposed history hub comes to fruition, it will help Clackamas County have one of the best history networks in the United States. It's exciting. But the crux of the matter is saving history costs money. You know that. It also continuously demands our attention. The Clackamas County Heritage Council is learning the best ways to stretch slender financial resources, which may well be through pooling our assets for commonly shared goals. And if the cost of saving our historic assets is kept low, residents, local government, and businesses will hopefully recognize we will repay ourselves by supporting a modest annual tax to preserve and enlarge our historic treasure. The BCC has already shown that you understand the need to preserve our history's past, and we thank you for your continuing support to the Clackamas County Heritage Council with administrative assistance. Now, I ask the Board of County Commissioners, each of you, to support the Clackamas County's Heritage Council upcoming proposal for creating a history, a county heritage district. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Yes, well, thank you, Lisa, for coming here today and all the other folks that are involved in the organizations you laid out. And just saw you all, the Oak Lodge History Detectives booth, the other night. And I really appreciate, just one thing I've actually got involved in many, many years ago when the Oak Lodge History Detectives first formed, and the great work that everyone does, not just for Oak Lodge, but for Oregon City, for the whole county. And it's something I've been pretty passionate about, that we need to find a solution for archiving and all the things you speak to. You're right, it takes money. It takes the resources, and I don't think that we've given it the proper amount of resources needed to preserve that. And it's part of our fabric of who we are, is Clackamas County. So you have my 100% support behind this.
Thank you.
And I'm anxious to see how we can put a district of some sort together, so-
Thank you.
-behind you as best as we can.
Thank you.
Sounded like your mic went out.
It did.
Yeah.
It was overamplified, and now it seems to be underamplified. But Mary's fixing it.
I'm fixing it.
Yeah, we're good.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Lisa. Next up is Bill, what?
Ken.
Oh, Ken, sorry.
Sitting over here on the end, I see how it is. I just want to confirm what I think to be the case with County Counsel, and that is to form a district would be a vote of the general public, correct?
Those within the district, correct.
Those within the district, okay. I don't know if I'll be in the district or not. I suppose that depends on how the district lines are drawn, but Lisa, you can rest assured you'll have my personal support.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Next up is Bill Weir and Richard Johnson. Oh, I missed a card here. Good morning and thank you for coming.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Chairman Bernard, Bill Weir in Damascus. I plan to come here today to continue testimony encouraging the county to recognize the legitimacy for the reestablishment of the city of Damascus and how the county can help us with this. However, I was distracted by viewing Commissioners' comments at the end of last week's Commissioners' meeting. The chairman during his comments said, quote, "I want to talk about James DeYoung," unquote. The chairman was not referring to Damascus issues presented by Mayor DeYoung during Citizens' comments. The chairman instead chose to ridicule him personally. This was done long after Mayor DeYoung left the building. He called DeYoung, quote, "the self-appointed supreme leader of the Oregon Territory," unquote.
No, I said that was what I appointed myself.
The chairman slandered him by spreading fake news that DeYoung was being sued for representing himself as a public official. The chairman pondered, how does one appoint himself mayor? This is false in its premise? That did not occur. He summed up by saying, "Really weird." I can assure you that both Mr. DeYoung and myself come here in all seriousness to present the case for reestablishing Damascus. It is obvious you county commissioners do not take this matter in earnest, instead relying on Bill 226 to solve the problem. The chairman gave a shout-out to the state senator who sponsored Bill 226. Of two previous bills by her concerning Damascus, one resulted in being ruled unconstitutional by Circuit Court, the other illegal by the Appeals Court. This new fix, 226, will surely be condemned to the same fate. Listening to the unfiltered musings by the chairman, it was equally disturbing to see other Commissioners laugh, smile, or remain silent during the cheap shots being leveled. That is, to borrow a phrase, really weird.
Thank you. Chair?
I just want to just put this out on the table right now. I do not condone the comments that were made last week. And yes, I was silent. I was silent. I was frustrated. I don't think it was appropriate. And I share some of those sentiments. I heard what I heard. It's difficult sometimes, but out of respect to my colleagues, I remained silent. But I just wanted, I do not condone what was said. I just thought that it was, it was, it was at least, at very least rude.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. I would concur with what Bill has said in his comments also. My position on the city of Damascus, I've been a resident there for 28 years, been involved with the city in various committees and stuff since its very beginning. And I think it's very unfortunate that this whole situation of disincorporation occurred. To me, it's a point of law, though. We have a court, second highest court in Oregon, that has stated very clearly that that vote that occurred was illegal on several points they've made. The point is, and their comments on that situation was that the city really never disincorporated. It always has been. Very strong language from the court. Now, we're supposed to be a country and hopefully a county of laws. And we have requested to get back the property that was taken or given over to the county at that time. We haven't made much progress on that at all. And if what the court has said is true, that it is illegal, that, that the city was disincorporated, that was not a legal issue, that we should be given back the items, our documents and other things that the county is holding should be given back to Damascus. They belong to the city. And with that strong language that really the city never was disincorporated, it always has been, that language couldn't have been any stronger. And so I would encourage the county to seriously look at this and to give us back our property and to not harass our mayor anymore and say things that are derogatory and not true. Thank you.
Can you, can you quote in the law where someone can appoint-
Pardon?
Can you appoint, you said you were based on law. Where in the law does it allow somebody to appoint themselves mayor and city council? Where?
I will answer that.
Okay, when you come up.
He can, he can answer that.
Okay. Because you know, I think back to when I was, when the city of Milwaukee gave away to somebody a book on a historic cemetery. We never found it again. And so we have a responsibility to preserve records. And I think Stephen is the one who makes that determination, preserve records. And if we give them to somebody and they disappear, that's our mistake. And so we have to be sure that we're giving them to somebody who will preserve them, protect them. Just like the historic Lisa was here talking about, if they go away and they disappear, then we're responsible. So anyway, so when Mr. Young comes up, will, DeYoung comes up, we'll have him answer that question.
The city takes that seriously. Our documentations and the things that we had in our possession and belong to the city, we protected those, and we always would.
Okay.
Okay.
Paul, I mean, Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a position on whether or not Damascus should or should not have been disincorporated or whether it was in fact legally or not legally disincorporated. Our issue is that we have essentially two conflicting pieces of law at this point in time. And you're asking us to choose between those two conflicts. One is a court decision that you have outlined quite well that says one thing. The other is the actions taken by the state legislature, which says something different. On advice of our counsel, our position, our best position, quite candidly, is to wait until those two conflicting pieces of law have been resolved. We will follow the law when those have been resolved, whichever way it comes out. I don't know that anybody here at this dais has a personal position on this issue. It was not a community that we personally live in. But we are bound by the law ourselves, and the last decisions that we had are what we, are what are reflected in our current position. At some point in time, the issue between the court and the legislature will get resolved. And at that point in time, we will comply with what, what that outcome is. But we're not in a position to make a choice between those two conflicts. That's not the, the role of the county commission. In the interim, all of the records will be properly maintained, and I believe it's been made clear that you can have copies of those until such time as this is resolved. This is not a personal thing on our part. This is not like we choose the state over, we choose Damascus, or something of that nature. Rather, we have conflicting law, and our job at this point in time is to stay neutral and let that get resolved by the state.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Douglas Walker and James DeYoung.
My name is Douglas Walker, and I'm a resident of Damascus. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, my letter is in reply to the meeting held on the 18th of July in regard to the remarks made towards the Honorable Mayor of Damascus, James DeYoung. Mayor DeYoung is an honest man. He's not prone to lies or deceit, since he is a minister as well as a leader in our local Damascus Community Church. Mr. DeYoung was given the position of mayor in lieu of the fact that our prior mayor had surrendered herself because of annexation to the city of Happy Valley and by the group of citizens of Damascus. The point of this letter is to ask Mr. Bernard of your counsel if you would care to reiterate the statements he made about Mayor DeYoung after he had left the council hall in the morning of the 18th of July 2019, to his face instead of behind his back, when he was not able to reply. We are a city and we're not, we're not legally removed from that status. Our ex-mayor, Diana Helm, was in violation of her oath of office when she filed an illegal election and held, held the election with bogus manner of counting the votes that were cast in 2016. It amazes me that the county accepted her filing since illegality was obvious. I'm speaking for myself, but feel disregard for the judgment of the Appeals Court is also not a legal position for Clackamas County to take. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Good morning, Chairman Bernard and the rest of the county commission. I'm James DeYoung, the duly and rightly appointed mayor of Damascus as of May 16, 2019. I will get into what the nature of my appointment is at the later part of my comments. This is my fourth appearance before this commission in the last five weeks, and I'm speaking here for two purposes. First of all, to reiterate again the point I made last week at this time, when I stressed that the appellate court decision of May 1, 2019, in DeYoung versus Brown overturned the decision of the Circuit Court of 2016. In other words, the appellate court stated in terms similar to what I'm about to say that the plaintiff, which is myself, is entitled to prevail as a matter of law. That means, and I want to comment then on Mr. Humberton's comments, that starting May the 1st, 2019 of this year, that decision made three years earlier was nullified. It means that everything returned, and I could quote words from that decision, returned to the position that Damascus had in 2016, the day before the election on May 16. It means that the law was returned to that situation. It meant that Damascus returned to what it was in 2016. The law was in existence from at least May the 1st of this year up until now. The present bill and law now signed by the governor, Senate Bill 226, is not operative yet. It means that Damascus exists yet. There are not two laws out there that somehow you as a counsel or commission are supposed to choose between. The law is the law. Where Senate Bill 226 may go is unknown at this point, but you can be sure that our city will file legal challenges to it. And that hopefully will end this three-plus years of, of failure to recognize the city of Damascus. So the appellate court decision is the law. And the city council began operating again on May the 16th and appointed me, according to the regulations of our city charter, to be mayor. So how does Damascus recover from the great harm it has suffered? We've had the loss of over $8 million in monies, in addition, properties, vehicles, furniture, and documents, and the loss of about 1,400 acres in territory along its western border that was annexed by Happy Valley since 2016. Well, my key word is reconciliation. We are willing to forgive and forget all our injuries in exchange for a working relationship with Clackamas County and the city of Happy Valley. Second, my purpose this morning is to affirm that our long suffering has an end. We as a city thought our magnanimous gestures would bring a reciprocity, but instead, we received at the best, a blank stare- received at the best, a blank stare, and at the worst, ridicule, misrepresentation. And we've been made the brunt of joking by this commission, particularly by the chair. Last week, after my testimony at about 21 minutes into the commissioners' meeting, I left the room. I thought that at least some smidgen of understanding would capture the attention of the commissioners, but I was wrong. I later discovered via a private citizen who stayed for the whole session, that I became the subject of jokes and ridicule about the one hour 16 minute mark of the recording of the session. The chair held up my blue sign up card and ridiculed me for signing in as mayor of Damascus. And he went on to make at least a half dozen errors and jokes. He accused me of being self-appointed, but I'm not. And let me elaborate on that just a moment, Mr. Chair. Our city charter said that when vacancies occur on the city council, and there were two vacancies, one being the former mayor who moved into Happy Valley, as my friend here just explained, the charter calls for filling those vacancies by the majority of people who remain on the council. That was done. Secondly, because the city no longer had a mayor, they appointed me as mayor. Now notice the word, it is appointment. I'm not elected. We will all who have been appointed to fill various vacancies will stand up for election at the due time when that is necessary, but we are duly appointed according to our city charter. It doesn't depend upon you and what you think about it, doesn't depend upon state law, it depends upon our charter, which we have, according to the state constitution, the right to home rule. Secondly, the chair said that I'm being sued for misrepresenting or representing an elected official, but I am not being sued. He said that I'm being, I was the self-appointed supreme leader of the Oregon Territory. And that kind of comment doesn't even deserve a remark by myself. The chair went on to ask, how does one appoint himself mayor? He went on to assert that the county, according to the county attorney, Stephen Madcor, was happy to turn over copies of Damascus documents, but not the originals. But I ask, those original documents belong to us as a sovereign city. And by the way, the only way I've been offered opportunity to get copies is to come in, make copy records request and pay for it. And that may take over a week's time to get those copies made. The chair also asserted that the city charter was turned over legally, but the appellate court said that is not true. The charter was never turned over. The city never took a vote to relinquish its charter. The circumstances that came so that the county received our charter, so to speak, is a legal fiction, as stated by the appellate court decision. And finally, the chair uttered these words, "It's almost absurd," unquote. And he added that his book, quote, "will be short on Damascus. It's really weird," end quote. Now I'm willing to forgive all this ridicule of myself and really of the city. But I ask, what does it speak about the tone of this county commission and the character of most of the people on it when they behave this way? What does it say to the citizen who comes before it to testify about any matter and yet afterward or in a back room, that person may be laughed at or ridiculed? How does a citizen have confidence that the commissioners take their leadership responsibilities in a responsible way and not one of you disavowed the chair's remarks? One of you, the person absent this morning, actually snickered when you, Mr. Chair, made your remarks. Last week, I noted that when elected officials disregard the law, it breeds general contempt for the law. The experience of last week just showed just how far elected officials will go in their contempt, unfortunately. And citizens of Clackamas County, I appeal to you, take note, take note. I think we can all do better than this. And I welcome, again, reconciliation. Thank you.
Well, I, so first off, I apologize. The rest of the commission, you know, I would say I stepped out of my, out in a position I should not have. So I apologize for that.
Thank you.
And, and, and if I offended you, I do apologize. And I, by the way, that comment about the supreme leader was about me, not you. I think if you listen to the recording, you'd find that out. But I would ask that county council, perhaps advise us, I don't know if you want to respond now, but on appointment of vacancies, when the terms of the other counselors had expired by this time, so, but I don't know that he's prepared to do that now.
That in fact would be advising the city of Damascus, that would not be advising the board. I'd be happy to again revisit the city's, former city council's bylaws, which I do have and I have reviewed, and I can talk to the board about that privately, but I'm not inclined to advise the city of Damascus.
All right. Appreciate that. All I know is historically, is that Clackamas River Water, when they were going through their issues, their, their terms hadn't expired, but they had quit. And because they didn't have a quorum, they weren't able to appoint new people. So that came to the commission to do. And the commission made those appointments, at least of a couple, that gave them enough to have a quorum. And that's my experience in that. So that's where I questioned, if the terms have expired, could the remainder of the council appoint? And let me just add one other thing. I supported the creation of Damascus all the way. I felt that a particular person came into Damascus for the purpose of destroying it. And I think a lot of people agree that's what happened. And, but now, it's very challenging, I think we would agree that if Damascus has to come back, it has to be something different, maybe smaller. And so I hope that the citizens of Damascus consider that, you know, re-establishing its boundaries and going on in the future to create the city that some people dream of.
Well, let me respond with two or three statements. Our city charter is what guards or guides our city government. We have never lacked a quorum, so when the elections or appointments took place in May, that was done by a quorum. So we have not violated the charter regarding that. Secondly, again, the appellate court decision said we were, we were as a city returned to where we were before the vote took place. That means we were never without a charter, our terms never ran out, except for the fact that therefore, if you go back three years, my term, for example, would have expired at the end of 2016. In, in the interim, since that time, of course, nothing has happened. So with legal input of our attorney and my personal attorney as well, we have decided that obviously those terms cannot have run out. Appointments have taken place, we will be up for election in the due record of time, and it behooves only the city of Damascus to decide how it's going to run itself. It is not up to the county. As I said, we've had a quorum all this time to make our decisions. Finally, it is up to the city of Damascus only to determine its boundaries. Cannot be left up to the city, to the county commission, not left up to private citizens. Every state, every city, according to the state constitution, determines its own boundaries. That's one of the big issues. Then obviously, we have to settle with Happy Valley, and we are in the process of doing that. Any other questions?
No. Thank you. County council?
Just going to say, Chair and Mr. DeYoung, that this is a evolving and complex matter. It's a matter of really first impression within the state. There is new legislation recently signed by the governor, which does have a direct appeal and challenge process to the Oregon Supreme Court, in which it is given a quick resolution pathway to determine the validity of the status of the city of Damascus. And until such time as we get clarity from the courts, it is my recommendation and advice that the county, which is the custodian of all things Damascus right now, retain possession of those because we are not authorized to unilaterally release these documents to individuals. We're giving them access to them. I have provided Mr. DeYoung with digital copies of a lot of budget documentation. He shakes his head no, but I have verification that we did. Whether it meets his level of satisfaction is a different story. But we've been cooperating to the fullest extent possible with them, but we are not delivering hard copies of original documents. That is true.
All right.
Well, let me again respond. You only became the caretaker of our legal documents by the, by the vote of May 17, 2016, which the appellate court had declared illegal. Therefore, your possession of our documents is illegal. And secondly, Senate Bill 226 has yet not been actualized. I know the governor signed it into law, but it calls for the secretary of state to do various things. She has not yet done that. In the meantime, Damascus exists as in a sovereign city under the state constitution. Thank you.
I just want to just say a couple of things. In a matter of how things unfolded at the end of the last meeting, I want people to understand that on our agenda, there's commissioner communications. And it's been my goal practice to participate in those, make my comments, whatever they are, and respect each of us will make our own comments and not really challenge or rebut one another in that final part. And that's just something that in the past, my comments have been rebutted, and I thought that was kind of inappropriate and really chose often either the next meeting or a different opportunity privately to, to work those things out. And that's just a matter of professionalism and decorum. And, and the chair was the last person to speak, as he, as the chair normally is, whoever regards who the chair is of that, that setting. But today, you know, this is the topic, and I have an opportunity to say a few things about, and I did a little bit just earlier. And I appreciate Commissioner Bernard apologizing. And I think that maybe he can actually go a little step farther perhaps and maybe speak to Mr. DeYoung after this meeting and make that more personal. I hope he can do that. I want to do say that this is a very complex matter. I've talked, and I've mentioned this before, that I've talked to a number, number of you folks about this and Mr. DeYoung even about a week ago, prior to the business meeting, actually. And I will say that Mr. DeYoung has always been professional. He's always been courteous. He's been a gentleman. And I've never had an experience in which he has been anything but those things. So I want to thank you for also, you know, continuing that dialogue, and it is a technicality. And in my nine years of doing this, and actually prior to my previous roles in elected capacity, I've seen elected officials, whether they're state legislators or whether they're local officials, make some mistakes. And as a result, things have happened. This is a conundrum like we've never seen. And it was my hope when the county sent the letter, and I'll repeat this, it was my hope that when the county sent the letter to the legislature, say, "Help, fix this," after, you know, subsequent to the judge's decision and basically remanding this and saying, you know, as we know it was done, that the legislature would somehow find a solution that would solve this. And whether it's a, whether it was a mediation or whether it was a vote or whether, whatever, but I was a little bit shocked because at that time, I thought that, you know, some of my colleagues had, were advocating for something that I didn't really necessarily feel that would provide the closure. And I don't think we have closure today. Right? And I don't think we have a path, a defined path to solve this. And some would argue that even maybe perhaps all those annexations, some argue, shouldn't be recognized. So therefore, you know, all five people who were, who were on the council at the time are actually still on the council. Some argue, not all. So this is, this is something that we can't solve. And as I've expressed, Mr. DeYoung on the phone and others, that the state's going to have to fix this. They created this mess, they're going to have to fix it. We don't have much of a role. We don't have much of a role in this whatsoever. So we're somewhat powerless because we are subordinate to the state. And I think that it's somewhat accurate to say that until the state sorts us out and has a clear path and it's not contested, that we're, we're in limbo. So that's where I, that's all I really wanted to say today on this matter, but I, I, as I've told Mr. DeYoung and others, it's the state that we need to be talking with or the courts to figure out a path on how to untangle this mess, if that's indeed what, what is, is prescribed. Thank you.
Actually, I'd like to add that our responsibility is to the citizens of Clackamas County, and I hope it is resolved because Damascus citizens are Clackamas County citizens. And it, it needs to be resolved one way or the other to what is best for the citizens of Clackamas County. All right. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to...
I can hear more.
What? Oh, less, sorry. You're over there.
Good morning. Well, I wore my fair shirt today. I was going to talk about the fair, going to talk about the fact that I've got several people volunteering to collect signatures so we can vote on the tolling scheme. But obviously, in light of what I've been sitting here listening to, I should have worn a different shirt. This is troubling. You know, the first time I saw Chair Bernard attack someone on camera was in 2007, and it was a city counselor in Milwaukee. I can recall numerous incidents. The infamous denial of a citizen who was so frustrated with the county because code enforcement, code enforcement was fining him thousands of dollars for a code violation when no code existed. And in frustration, he showed up here, and he got laughed at, he got hauled, hauled out of here. He got hauled out of here because he was so frustrated, he tried to stage a silent protest. And he was branded in the Oregonian as a disruptive man. And at the end of the meeting, at the end of the meeting, Mr. Bernard went on to call the citizen a bully. As someone who was outrageously attacked on April 28th of 2016, I invite all of you to go back and watch that display and how I handled it and how much time we spent, how much time and pain I went through dealing with that. And then we move forward. Here we are in 2018. His conduct, which was enabled and defended by his political allies, two of whom are sitting right here, was reprehensible, completely reprehensible. And now here we are, just over a year later, and your response to someone who commented about something critical, illegal, and conundrum, what did that turn into? No response while Mr. DeYoung was here, but like myself, after Mr. DeYoung is gone, and when you're giving communications, you start by, didn't start, regardless of what you said, none of it had a damn thing to do with reality. It was all opinion, and it was your dismissive conduct and your treatment once again of citizens that's reprehensible. It is. These attacks are not going to stop, obviously. I can't imagine how you're going to defend your record when it comes time for reelection. And I'm out of here. I'm too upset to stick around, and I mean it. And if any of you have been through some of what others have gone through, you'd either be too afraid to show up, or you'd get up here and you'd come so unglued, you wouldn't make sense. But you know what? I'm making sense. If there's anyone here, could anyone here tell me I'm not making sense? Would someone on the camera, would the county attorney, I mean, the attorney here, tell me I'm not making sense in saying? me I'm not making sense in saying, "You are not qualified to remain as the chair, sir." And changing the subject and dancing around about having Damascus in the future, you wish him well now, and, "Oh, it's a conundrum, and it's complex." Why didn't you think about that before you started attacking and dismissing him? And the answer is, you've got a character that doesn't qualify you to remain in office. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And next up is the consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. There we go. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval to apply for a grant from Oregon Department of Education Youth Development Division for Youth and Community to fund, prevent net community school sites in Clackamas County. Approval of a revenue grant agreement with Health Share of Oregon to help me grow liaisons. Approval of a local grant agreement with Northwest Family Services to provide evidence-based parenting education classes. Approval of a local grant agreement with Toto Hutos to provide evidence-based parenting education classes. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, Milwaukee Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Approval of a sub-recipient agreement with Legal Aid Services of Oregon to provide housing rights and referral and legal assistance for Clackamas County residents. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Molalla related to plan review, permitting and inspection services. Approval of a contract with Harper-Hoff Peterson Regelis for the Camby Ferry ITS project. Under elected officials, a request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Oregon Motor Carrier Safety Action Plan. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a grant modification, number two, between Clackamas County and the USDA Forest Service, Mount Hood National Forest for the Dump Stopper Program. Under the Terrorism and Cultural Affairs Department, approval of a personal professional services contract with Travel Portland for the Portland Regional Partner Agreement, Regional Cooperative Tourism Program. And approval of a personal professional services contract with Oregon Tourism Commission for the Mount Hood Columbia River Gorge Regional Partner Agreement, Regional Cooperative Tourism Program. And under Technology Services, we have approval of a service-level agreement with Clackamas Soil, Water and Conservation District for lease of dark fiber connection, and approval of a service-level agreement with Harmony Academy for lease of dark fiber connection. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? A commissioner?
Yeah, I don't want to remove anything. I just want to make a comment. There's a lot of business that we do in the consent agenda. We've got a lot of parent education. We've got some great stuff happening for families and kids. But one thing I just wanted to point out is our fiber to help Harmony Academy, which is a new recovery high school, which is a model that is pretty unique and wonderful because kids choose, will choose to go to this school because they want to be surrounded by other kids in recovery. When I was at the National Association of Counties and we had our Healthy County Roundtables where we talked about what is effective and innovative for dealing with prevention and substance use for young people, this idea really caught the attention of other commissioners around the country. And from our roundtable, this idea was presented to, across all the counties that were there, which were multiple counties there at NACO. So I know we're here to approve the fiber, which helps with the internet and saves our local government jurisdictions lots and lots of money, but I just could not resist the opportunity to shout out about Harmony Academy, which will be a wonderful asset to our community. That's all.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is County Administrator Update.
Commissioners, I'd like to share with you some good news that is being accomplished by our county departments and staff. First, Water Environment Services, Wes. The Carley Creek Project has won the Innovative Stormwater Project Award from the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association. This award will be, will be presented to Wes at an upcoming conference this September. Since last December, the Carley Creek facility has filtered harmful pollutants from stormwater runoff from surrounding industrial properties before it reaches Carley Creek and the Clackamas River, the drinking water source for more than 360,000 people. So we thank you to our great Wes staff for that accomplishment. Next, Clackamas County Dog Services has, is always helpful, happy to help lost dogs find their homes. In case you missed it in the media last week, there was an owner who found her lost dog, who was at our shelter due to a blitz of outreach from the county and from the Oregon Humane Society. The dog, named Chase, had been lost for nearly nine days when he was rescued in Camby by the Humane Society. The owner came to Dog Services not just to be reunited with Chase, but also to immediately buy a county dog license and commit to microchipping so that if Chase ever gets away again, he'll be reunited with his owner right away. So thank you to our Dog Services team. Finally, the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, NCPRD, received feedback about its Rec Mobile. The Rec Mobile brings fun activities, games, sports, crafts, and more to people in NCPRD parks throughout the summer. A member of the public, Mary Kay, wrote and said, "I was at Rizley Park this week with my children, and they were excited to participate with the Rec Mobile. I wanted to be sure to follow up with our experience because it was so delightful. The crafts and games that were planned were engaging for a variety of ages. Mostly, though, I was impressed with how great the staff was, being around all the kids, and managing the chaos that can bubble up with so many ages participating at once. What an incredible program. Thank you." So thank you to Mary Kay for sending that note and to our outstanding NCPRD staff and for the program. That's the good news I wanted to share with you today, Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Communication, Paul, you're up first.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I had some comments I wanted to share, but I'm just gonna change gears a little bit here. I, I'm, and my goal right now is to be respectful of everyone, my colleagues. And so this is not in order to relive what we just experienced. Those are very awkward, those are very difficult circumstances, and I don't want to do that. So I'm going to take advantage of this opportunity because I think it's a teaching moment. And I just want to just reflect where I'm going with this. So my first public meeting that I went and testified as a citizen on a, on a matter, it was a matter that was, that affected myself and my neighbors. And it wasn't the county commission, it was another jurisdiction. And I went up there and I made my comments, and I thought I articulated my comments pretty well. And I finished my comments, and I sat down, and one of the board, the chair of the jurisdiction, as staff, the general manager, staff, you know, what's, what's this all about? And, and long story short, in the conversation that ensued, I felt I was kind of dismissed and ridiculed. And I just thought, that's, you know, that's really inappropriate. And that board changed its policies. It, a long, long, in a long story, which I won't go into, that board changes policies. When I got elected commissioner in November of 2010, I started attending the county commission meetings prior to being sworn in in January of 2011. And the last meeting in December of 2010, the last, the last business meeting in December of 2010, I sat in the back where those ladies are sitting right now. And it was, it was, it was a very disruptive meeting, and things went awry. And I don't think the way the meeting was handled at a particular time was very good. And, you know, there were a lot of people in the room. I have always been a person that really believes in transparency, professionalism, decorum, respect, engaging people in dialogue, engaging people in dialogue in a way that's constructive. The point that Mr. DeYoung made, I believe, was an accurate one. I mean, we want to encourage dialogue with our citizens, and I think the aspect that if they are, feel it any which way, that they could be intimidated or ridiculed, because it takes a lot, it takes a lot of courage. It's hard for a lot of people. Some people will not ever sit in those chairs and speak to us because it takes a lot of courage. And I really respect and I encourage people to speak what's on their mind because if they have, have something that's important to them, and it's related to the jurisdiction or the people, they're, they're elected leaders, maybe they even voted for, often, that they should, they should have the freedom and the comfort that, that their, their comments will be listened to and, and, and not necessarily responded to. We can't respond to every one that comes up here, but at least listen to. And I want to encourage people to come and be able to speak to us, to share what's on their mind. And I think Mr. DeYoung's point and my experience, my experiences in the past, well, not, that wasn't the first time, my first time of republic speaking that I, that I was challenged. But I think it's important to know that people are welcome and that you can actually dialogue. And I appreciate today, Chair, that you did do some of that. You did try to engage in a dialogue, in a, in a tone, in a respectful tone today. But I think we need to be consistent with that, and all of us recognize that we shouldn't challenge our folks that come up here. We should, you know, if this is not the right time and place, that's one thing. But I think we need to make sure that they leave here feeling that they were heard, they weren't, they weren't really challenged or ridiculed, because we want people to be engaged. And I also respect that the, the subsequent chair after the first one, Chair Lehan, she helped make adjustments, I thought, that were positive towards public engagement. And then the following chair, Chair Ludlow, did things to encourage public involvement. But at some times, those went awry. So there were times where that didn't always work out. It was very difficult with time constraints, sometimes to be the chair and to know that there are constraints, but, and maybe limiting a person's ability to speak. And I know that sometimes people come up here with political motivations that sometimes are hurt, but, you know, I understand that. But I think maybe the teaching moment is that here is that we, we, we recognize when people come up and speak that it's difficult, it's challenging, takes a lot of courage, but we want them to come back, and we want them to be respected. Thank you.
All right. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To some degree, I agree with the comments by my colleague, Mr. Savas, but I also try to remember something, and maybe this comes out of my experience in, as a probation officer, and that is, is "Let ye who is without sin cast the first stone." None of us sitting here are perfect human beings, not any one of us, and we all make mistakes. Sometimes we make them publicly, sometimes we make them privately, but the bottom line is, we're not perfect human beings. We're just trying to do the best we can for the community that we are here to serve. I think that we don't need to say any more about that, but that's kind of where I try to come from. Sometimes I get angry, and then I have to get over it because I'm not a perfect human being either. On that note, I'll move forward to the events and activities of the week. I've spent a lot of time this week at different kinds of CPO and Hamlet meetings, as well as other public events, where I've had a great opportunity to talk to a lot of people about a lot of the things that we have been doing here in Clackamas County, and get a lot of feedback. And for the most part, it's been pretty positive feedback. There are, of course, things that people don't necessarily agree with and ask us why we can't do this, that, or the other. But overall, we, the perception seems to be that we are generally moving in a fairly positive direction. I want to thank our new general manager because I think you are making a major contribution in that direction. So we will continue to try and work harder to be better commissioners, and I know you are working hard at being a good general manager. I had the honor of attending the Sunrise Water Authorities swearing in and swear in the new members of their water commission, and I want to thank Ernie Platt for that kind invitation. It was an honor to be able to do that. Toured once again the Veterans Facility with a company that has shown some interest in helping us develop the Veterans Facility and expand it, and have received the message that we have to be careful and slow down and not move too fast. I get that. But it is wonderful that there are companies out there that do want to help us. It's a population that deserves the help and deserves the respect, and it's wonderful to have companies that want to step up. A lot of constituent meetings this week on different issues. Also enjoyed attending the West Lynn Community Fair, our local community festival. It was great. It was good to see all the non-governmental organizations there, letting people know what services they provide, and also what opportunities people could take if they want to volunteer in some of those community organizations. And then finally, I attended a wave research laboratory conference at OSU regarding wave damage to the riverbanks of the Willamette River in particular, and the impact that's having on erosion and on people's docks and boats and whatnot like that. And on that note, I will move on to the dog. Facts about Mars, the planet. It has the highest mountain in the solar system. It is a reddish-brown color. It orbits at a fairly quick rate. Facts about Mars, the dog. He would love to help you explore all around the mountains in the Pacific Northwest. He has a beautiful reddish-brown coat, and he also orbits quickly. Mars is a happy fellow who would thrive going to training with his new persons. He's a smart dog who learns quickly and would do great knowing that he and his new person speak the same language. He will need an active home. He'd probably love being your adventuring partner and exploring all that the Pacific Northwest has to offer. Structure, a fenced yard, and mental, as well as physical activity will bend his life so much. If Mars sounds like the adventuring partner you have been looking for, come in and meet this active fellow today. For more information about Mars or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at (503) 655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I'm going to go back to Paul. He wanted to read something.
Yeah, I've been tasked with the, being the spokesperson for some of this census, the US Census that's taking place here, so I'm just going to read part of this, and I'll be speaking about this from time to time as we get closer into the census. So I am sure most are aware that in 2020, the federal government will be conducting its census population count for all residents. For many reasons, it is important that residents of Clackamas County participate and be counted. I've been asked to help outreach, help the outreach for this county effort, and I'll be encouraging participation and involvement for all of us. Counting will begin next April, and everyone should receive information about ways they can be counted. I'll be sharing with you some interesting facts each week about why the 2020 census is so important, and so, a couple of things. So, for example, the 2010 census showed that Clackamas County, with a population of nearly 376,000 people back then, in 2018, our population was estimated at 416, a 10.7% increase. And recently, I even heard that it's possibly as high as over, just a little over 419,000 today. Census data is utilized for a redrawing of congressional maps. Oregon is expected to gain one seat in the House of Representatives due to growth based on the expected census count. And lastly, we get a lot of our funding based on how many citizens we have in the county. So if we're not getting everyone count, we're not receiving the same amount of federal assistance that we would, that other states would get. So it's important for us to meet the needs that we get an accurate census count. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to share with all of you a highlight this week. Commissioner Savas and I were able to attend the block party for the Street of Dreams. It's sort of the pre-opening that the Home Builders and Northwest Natural Gas put on. And what I really loved, well, we've had a lot of interaction with the Home Builders and through our Housing Affordability Task Force and the Home Builders, was Ann Johnson came when we presented our zoning and planning recommendations to us. And at least I know Commissioner Savas and I have been attending the task force meetings as we can to just keep up on what is going on with those recommendations. But the Home Builders are really the ones that are going to help us out greatly with this housing crisis that we have. And when I was walking through and turning the corner, I have a picture I wanted to show everyone, which shows really what Home Builders are. And if you look at the picture, you see, I don't know if you can see it so good, but it's HB- it's HBA is home, HBA is multifamily, HBA is modular, HBA is remodeling, HBA is high performance, mixed-use cottage. And some of the other ones that you can't see were ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units, townhomes, multifamily. You know, it's everything. And sometimes we forget that because we associate the Street of Dreams, which are all those very, the newest in home architecture and technology and interior design, and it's really quite a treat to go through and appreciate the beauty of those homes. But it's so much more than that. And I just wanted to take that moment to just appreciate the collaboration that we have with our industry and the private sector. And also their foundation, do the home builders really helped our Clackamas Women Services shelter with so much. And so the work that they do for the community, for the benefit of the community, is very, very much appreciated. So I was inspired last night, especially turning the corner and seeing all those signs and know we have a lot of work to do in order to move forward and really facilitate. We can't create it, we're county government, we can't create the market, we can't dictate the market, but we can sure work with our private partners to create the environment of which we can promote things such as workforce housing and more affordability so that everyone that wants to live in our community and works in our community has an affordable place to live. So those are my comments for today. Thank you.
All right. I just want people to know that we're, we've been working with Happy Valley as much as we can to try and resolve the issue on the Parks District. You know, and I guess for a comment about today is, every day is a teaching moment. I hope to learn something new every day. I'm not perfect, never said I was, make mistakes, as we all do. And, you know, I probably should just learn to shut my mouth sometimes.
Yep.
So with that, you know, I, I, I really hope, Happy Valley, I, I hope Damascus resolves our issue. I hope that, that the Damascus citizens get what they want, and that's all I've ever wanted. I tell you, back in 2003 or '04, I used to go to those community meetings when they were to talk about the creation of the community, the various land use issues, very complicated, very, back then, they were pretty calm, and then they got pretty hot over the years. But, you know, I, I hope that this will be resolved, whether it's in, well, it'll have to be in the courts. And I look forward to your briefing, Mr. McCorr. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.